Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, March 25th, 2025 regular monthly board meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Mr. Long, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Vochet.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris is not with us. Ms. Creason?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Ms. Isart?
Here.
Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Warner is not with us this evening. Ms. White?
Thank you. Agenda item number 2.1 is the communications update super news, and we are joined by Ms. Sarah Felt. Good evening.
Good evening, board members. Hope you're doing okay tonight. In front of you, I have your March packet for our communications update, in that you will find press releases and articles that we've pushed out to the public. You'll also find some analytics from our social media, numbers on how many people are seeing our posts, engaging with our posts, as well as how many visits that we're getting to our website. And at the end, you'll see a list of what you're going to see on tonight's super news. So, without further ado, please enjoy March's edition of super news.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for super news.
Hi, I'm Barry Lemoine.
And I'm Sarah Felt, and welcome to super news where we shine the light on some of the good things happening in our schools.
And none shine brighter than the members of our academic teams program. Over 200 students from across the district competed in the last tournament for academic games. In addition to the thrill of the competition, many players were vying for a spot on one of the district's four national teams that will travel to Virginia next month to compete against teams from across the country.
This most recent event was the culmination of a five-month season sanctioned by the Academic Games League of America. Scores from each game are tallied, and at the end of the season, the players receiving the highest cumulative scores are named as the sweepstakes winners, automatically qualifying for the national tournament. Congratulations to these students who will represent St. Bernard schools at this year's national tournament.
And while these students were competing in academics, many others were competing in athletics at Special Olympics. The games feature student athletes, volunteers, buddies, and sponsors who all come together for this annual event. Special thanks to them and to all of our supporters who make this celebration possible, especially Valero Energy, whose generosity is truly appreciated.
To all of the volunteers who are here today to help to make this event possible, we have the sheriff's office, the fire department, Nunez Community College, parish government, so many local agencies that sponsor this event and make it possible.
Other performers include those involved with the upcoming performance of Kiss Me Kate. With music and lyrics by Cole Porter, the stage at the CCAC will come alive with dazzling choreography, unforgettable tunes, and a hilarious battle of the sexes as the cast brings The Taming of the Shrew to life with a Broadway twist. There's love, laughter, and a little bit of chaos. So don't miss this high-energy, high-fashion, high-drama musical event of the season. Come fall in love and laugh till it hurts. Tickets are on sale now.
And now, we'll leave those stars and head over to Smith to meet some of the superstars there.
Hello, I'm Ace.
And I am Kenzie Sylv, and we are happy for you to join us here at Smith. Let's begin with the invention convention, sponsored by Valero. The event showcased the talent of our fifth-grade students that was on full display. The projects showed off our creativity and ingenuity by creating new inventions or improving current products. It was a lot of fun and some true hands-on learning.
Bright minds were also on display, thanks to the efforts of the Louisiana Reading Association and its Young Authors Writing Contest. Each year, the LRA sponsors this event, and we are proud to say that several of our creative writers were district winners and may go on to the state competition.
I guess you could say they really have the right stuff. Other writers making the news are those who took part in the Goat in the Road residency. Artists work with our fifth-grade students on playwriting, and at the end of the year, student work is performed by professional actors.
Some of these performers also came to our school and showcased some other plays for our third, fourth, and fifth-grade students. Hey, I wonder what's smarter, a writing goat or a spelling bee?
In other news, our school recently celebrated Black History Month by honoring local African-Americans who made a positive impact on our community. We also heard from two very special guests and honorees, Ms. Deja Major and Reverend Jaden Green.
And we'll end today with another special partnership with the Kiwanis. The Kiwanis Club of St. Bernard has partnered with us to celebrate students and instill a love of reading in our superstars. Each month, students who reach their goal are treated to pizza, and one student wins an Amazon tablet.
And at the end of the school year, some of our fifth graders will earn a field trip to Barnes and Nobles where they will have a gift card to purchase new books. It's a fun way to encourage reading, and we are thankful to all who make it possible.
And we are thankful to you for joining us. Now, back to Penn TV. Bye.
Nice job, Smith. Other hands-on learning took place recently with the Ag Magic at Dockville. Students from across the district and across the region visited the farm, taking a journey through Louisiana's agriculture and the economically beneficial commodities that they use every day. Ag Magic on the River experience is always an interactive, visually stimulated environment, and it's also a lot of fun. Thanks to our partners at the Miro Foundation for hosting this great event.
And speaking of learning, we have some exciting news to share from our Teach St. Bernard program. Every three years, our alternative certification program is evaluated by the state to ensure our practices are aligned and at the high rigor level of college certification programs. Last month, our TSB cohort led an onsite review with the LDOE and ETO, who spent a week in our schools conducting observations, hosting focus groups, and evaluating our program practices.
And the good news, our Teach St. Bernard program was awarded with a 4 out of 4, or a highly effective score, for the second time in a row. Thanks to our administrators, TSB candidates, and TSB faculty for their tireless efforts to demonstrate how great St. Bernard Parish schools are and how vital this program is to the recruitment and retention of our teachers.
And if you're out there watching this and have ever considered becoming a teacher or working in our schools, the opportunities are endless. Just visit our website or call the school board office.
You know, much of our student success is a testament to our amazing teachers. And recently, the Kiwani organization celebrated our teachers at a very special ceremony. Food, music, gift cards, and a testament to learning were all part of the event.
Special thanks to Kevin Hoffman for spearheading the new Terrific Teacher Program, to Mike Gennart for sponsoring the event, and to all of the community partners who donated over $10,000 worth of prizes to this year's winners. We are so grateful to you for all that you do honoring our teachers.
And speaking of educational leadership, our school board members recently returned from the 87th Annual Louisiana School Board Association Convention, held earlier this month in Lake Charles. With the theme of a framework for success, keys to good governance, local school board members met with colleagues from across the state to learn more about the opportunities available and the challenges facing public education.
In addition to hosting an array of presentations and workshops, the LSBA also swore in its board of directors for the upcoming year. Congratulations to our school board president, Catherine Lemoine, who will also serve as the president for the Louisiana School Board Association, an organization which provides leadership, service, and support for the state's school boards.
Shawmet High School was also recognized at the event as winners of this year's LSBA Student Video Contest. The submission was from its Owl Watch News team, highlighting the many opportunities that are available here at the high school. In addition to being named as the overall winner, the Owls also received the top prize, a $1,000 check. Owl Watch News does a great job of highlighting some of the amazing things that take place at our school campus each day, and truly captures the theme of this year's contest: Our School, Our Stories.
And you can't talk about the Owls without thinking of Mr. Wayne Warner, who recently was inducted into the St. Bernard Sports Hall of Fame with the humanitarian award, which honors an individual whose life is defined by service, compassion, and a commitment to making the world a better place.
And there is no one more deserving of this honor than Mr. Warner, who has truly impacted so many lives in our community, so this award was a fitting tribute to his life's work.
Now, let's head over to Pirate's Cove and meet the news crew at TRIST.
Hello, I'm Kayden.
And I'm Renee, and welcome to our TRIST Super News segment. We'll begin with something to cheer about as our TRIST cheerleading team attended Nationals and made history, placing for the very first time. It was a lot of fun and a true testament to hard work and teamwork.
Our Beta Club team also qualified for Nationals as nearly 80 of its members traveled to Lafayette for our state Beta Convention to compete in a series of events against thousands of students from across Louisiana. TRIST had an outstanding showing, bringing home several impressive victories. The digital portfolio team, consisting of Leila Brown, Isla Caruso, Ava Hefker, and Isabella Lemoine, earned a well-deserved third-place finish. Meanwhile, the robotics team, Colton Bourgeois, Kayden Bryan, Rami Dally, Jack McMullin, Wyatt Scully, Preston Siniz, and Bryce Watson clinched first place. Additionally, several individuals earned top honors. Jack McMullin secured third place in math, Jay Jamore took first place in ELA, and Autumn Higgins-Botham was honored as premier performer. These exceptional students will now travel to Orlando in June to compete nationally, facing off against peers from across the country. We can't wait to see how they do.
Speaking of Orlando, the last time we were in Disney World, they wouldn't give the character Elsa any more balloons.
Why not?
Because she would just, "Let it go, let it go." Anyway, we'd also like to sing our praises to Abigail Hunt, whose beautiful artwork was displayed at the Louisiana School Board Association Annual Conference in Lake Charles. We're so proud of her talent and for representing our school and community so well. And finally, we'd like to congratulate and give our best wishes to our TRIST Student of the Year, Rami Dally. Not only did he win Parish-wide honor as an eighth-grade student of the year, but he is also one of the eighth finalists in the entire state, and will go to Baton Rouge for this year's statewide recognition. That's it for now, we'll see you next time. Bye.
Nice job, Pirates. And that'll just about do it for us, but before we go, it's my pleasure to share this next video clip about our Goat in the Road Playwriting Program here in St. Bernard Parish.
We go into schools and work with students once a week over the entire school year. We teach them playwriting, improvisation, we do a lot of creative brainstorming. The students, over the course of the year, write about seven or eight short plays, and they choose one to turn into a full-length play. And then we choose a selection of those plays to be presented in an annual showcase.
Yay, finally, we can do something fun at our job!
The showcase is bringing to life a selection of these student plays with lights and sound and props and costumes, and the students have a chance to see those plays, and then they also have a chance to bring their families and friends and the general public to see those plays come to life.
The actors were very funny and how they expressed the characters.
Seeing the adults interpreting their work in like a really fun and fantastical way is like so thrilling, and I think it's like so delightful for the students to see themselves onstage, their language, their experiences.
The winner is... conditional!
Thank you, you were right. You are the bestest parent ever.
No! No! This can't be possible! You did something!
Uh-uh, I didn't do nothing. I just trusted myself and believed I could do it, and if you believe in yourself, you can also do it and not be so mean with people.
I just like read the script of mine, and I was like, they're doing everything word for word. It was like so exciting just to see a paper, and then whatever was on the paper just came to life. It felt like a fairy tale.
I feel like the Shire students shined. I watched them be so bold in their writing, and I can tell that they have a lot inside of them, and this was just a way to connect with that Shire kid.
It feels like a lot of joy being shared, both from the performer and the audience. So, that's what playwright is to me, it's a joyous like environment where words meet imagination, meet like theatrics, meet fun. Yeah, it's great. I love it. Do you have any advice for future playwrights?
You can do anything if you put your mind to it.
Trust yourself and trust anything that pops in your mind, make it come to life.
Just do it. That's my advice, just do it.
Don't erase anything because, well, you can erase some things, but your ideas are never too crazy because they're yours.
We look forward to seeing you at the event on April 16th at Nunez Community College. Thanks for tuning in, and we'll see you next time here on super news, where we always let...
The super news roll! Bye, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Felt, for that wonderful edition of super news. Any questions or comments from board members?
Brought some people with me, too.
Yes, so agenda item number 2.2 is our Goat in the Road fifth-grade playwright program, and tonight we have joining us Ms. Eleanor Humphrey and Chris Kamenstein. Thank you so much for being here with us.
Yep. Thank you all, thank you so much for giving us some of your time. I know it's precious, and you've got a full, delightful agenda this evening, so good evening to everyone on the school board, to the community. My name is Eleanor Frederick Humphrey, I'm the Education Director at Goat in the Road Productions, also known as Ms. E. in the classroom.
I'm Chris Kamenstein, Co-Chief of the Productions, also known as Mr. K.
So this evening, we just wanted to share with you a couple of events that we have coming up here in St. Bernard. These are all free, family-friendly theater events. Starting off this weekend, actually, Saturday, March 29th, at Dockville at 10:00 a.m., we're doing Goat in the Schools, which is our touring show that goes to all of the different schools that we're in with the playwright program. It presents four plays written by students from the playwright program. One of them this year is one of the students that went through playwright last year, Isaiah Braggs from Lacoste Elementary. So you can come see Isaiah's play this Saturday at Dockville at 10:00 a.m. There's games, there's snacks, there's fun, it's about an hour, 10:00 a.m. at Dockville, come on down. We're super excited for Goat in the Schools. And then also, you heard a little bit about the playwright showcase, so that's happening on April 16th at Nunez at 7:00 p.m. Again, free, family-friendly, and we have folks all across the parish participating in that. So it will present nine plays written by students who went through the playwright program this year, so every school will be represented by a play. And then also, the companies that are presenting are also connected to the parish, so you'll get to see Downstage Left perform, who used to be the Coffee House Players, and those are all alums from Shawmet High, who are performing and putting on plays written by students here in the parish. So hope to see you out there. That'll be at Nunez, 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, April 16th. Again, free, family-friendly, hope to see you all.
It's been such a joy to work with St. Bernard students, teachers, we just appreciate the support of the school board, of the schools, and especially of the Miro Foundation, who makes the program possible. And I'll just finish with a quick teacher quote. This is from our teacher partner at Smith Elementary, and I think it shows a little bit of the power of the program. She says, "I hope you know that the students apply the things you teach them during their regular instruction. There have been many times during a lesson where one of them would say, 'That's like what Ms. E. taught us. The concepts and ideas that you've introduced have made them stronger ELA students, and I couldn't be more grateful.'" Thanks for your time, y'all.
Thank you. Eleanor and Chris, on behalf of the board, we want to thank you and the entire team at Goat in the Road for all of the work that you have done in our schools. If I'm not mistaken, I think this is the third year that you all have done the playwright program with our fifth-grade students from across the parish, and I know many of us on the board have been able to come and see the showcase, and it really is such a fantastic day of performances, and none of it would be possible without the Miro Foundation. And joining us tonight from the Miro Foundation is Mr. Bill Haines, and so, I'm sorry, Bill and Chris Haines in the front row, I'm so sorry! We have both Bill and Chris Haines here tonight, so again, on behalf of the board, we want to thank you for your investment and our students in this program. And like you said, the lessons that they learn from this playwright program really just, you know, are pervasive through all of their writing, and so it helps kids fall in love with writing and reading and theater, and we couldn't be more excited. So thank you, and I'm going to open it up for any other board members that want to say anything. I know Ms. Creason has, her son has gone through the program before and has...
He was one of the first students to do this. At Lacoste, Wyatt Cameron, he went through, and boy, was he mad that you guys didn't pick him up.
I was Cameron's teacher that year, actually. Yeah, yeah.
Does he still have his play?
I don't know that I've seen the play. It would be super cool, sometimes that stuff doesn't make it home to us. You give it to them, and we don't, we don't ever see it, but he definitely has a love of writing, and I know that what you guys do with the kids is just really special, so we very much appreciate it.
Yeah, I think one more element I want to lift up is every student that writes, they all write a play, and they actually receive a published copy of that play. So if you know a student in playwright, ask to see their play, because they have a published copy of it. And they can, I think the cool thing about that, they can do anything they want with it when it's done, right? We have some students, it goes on their shelf, some perform it, right? Some sell it, and we're like, yeah, absolutely, you can sell your play, it's yours, right? You're a published play right now. So I think that's such a key detail to it, it's like, they're a playwright now, which is amazing.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, agenda item number 2.3 is the presentation of our Academic Games National Team, and we have Ms. Mary Lametta here to talk a little bit about that.
Good evening, it's my pleasure tonight to present to you the outstanding students who've excelled in the local Academic Games competitions throughout this school year and their dedicated coaches. These remarkable students have achieved top scores in the four local tournaments held over the course of the year, and this is a testament to their commitment, hours of studying during the school year and the summer, and the guidance of their local school coaches who helped propel them this far. As a result of their hard work, these students have earned the opportunity to compete in the prestigious Academic Games League of America National Tournament. This year, the tournament will be in Arlington, Virginia, from Friday, April 25th through Monday, April 28th, at the Hyatt Regency Crystal City, and they'll join over 2,000 students in four days of intense competition. Throughout these local tournaments, these students have shown not only academic prowess, but also their character and integrity, and these are qualities that we and the Academic Games League of America strive to develop in students. It's been an extreme pleasure to work with these students throughout the school year. So at this time, I would like to acknowledge and extend our gratitude to the parents of these students. Your role and their achievements cannot be overstated, and we celebrate you tonight as well. In addition to our parents, students, and coaches, we also have representatives from Shawmet Refining, our corporate sponsor, with us tonight. Their generous support over the years, as you know, has been pivotal in making our local tournaments possible and defraying the costs associated with the national tournaments for our players and their parents. Thanks to their generosity, our students and coaches can focus on preparing for competition without the added burden of fundraising. Their commitment to our academic endeavors enriches our community immeasurably. It's now my pleasure to introduce the representatives from Shawmet Refining we have with us tonight. We have Ms. Elizabeth Ellison Frost and Mr. Jared Wemberley, the refinery manager, and Mr. Wemberley's going to say a few words.
Thank you, Ms. Lametta. Good evening, board, it's good to be back. This is a longstanding tradition, and on behalf of Shawmet Refining and PBF Energy, I'm happy to be here tonight to recognize this year's version of the St. Bernard Parish Academic Games National Team, and now that I've been here, I think, three years, I'm starting to recognize some kids. Good job by continuing to perform. I'd like to begin by congratulating you each individually and as a team. It's such a great honor that you're competing and continuing to push yourselves to go to this national competition. Both Shawmet Refining and PBF Energy are proud to be a part of this program because, like you, we place a high value on education and academic excellence. The Academic Games main goal is to develop thinking kids of character, excellence, and integrity, and these qualities help to enrich our community, as well as build the foundation for you, our future leaders. It takes commitment and dedication to become members of the national team, and your efforts are to be applauded. So, great job. So, thanks again, and wish you all the best in Arlington, Virginia. Hopefully that you bring back as many trophies as always, maybe even more this year, and I hope that the cherry blossoms are still around for you when you get up there, because it's a beautiful time of the year. And so now, I'd like to present the check and the amount of $15,000 to defray the cost of the travel and then the national games, so.
Jared and Elizabeth, on behalf of the board, we want to thank you so much for your investment in our students and in the Academic Games program. Like Ms. Lametta mentioned, because of you and your generosity at Shawmet Refining PBF, our students can prepare for this tournament without the burden of having to fundraise, and so without you, this would not be possible, and we have such gratitude to you and the entire Shawmet Refining PBF family, so thank you so much.
It's a great investment, because the awards they win every year, it shows that they're studying and working hard to accomplish their goals.
Absolutely.
We're happy to help.
Any other board members? Ms. Isart?
Just to add to what Ms. Lemoine said, we sincerely appreciate your generosity and your many years of that generosity to help defray the cost of our students going to national, and we're just so proud of all the students. As you said, many of these students, you've recognized faces, and we've been seeing many of them since elementary school, and now they're in high school, so it's great that they continue to work so hard during the day at school, but then before school and after school with Academic Games, and so congratulations to each and every one of you students, parents, congratulations to you too. We know it's a double effort for you to get them there, pick them up after, and we really appreciate all that you do to see your children excel, and we're truly happy for them. And thanks again to Shawmet Refining, and we appreciate all that you do, and I didn't get to say that... And I didn't get to say the last item, but we thank the Miro Foundation so much for all you do, and always being a part of the St. Bernard Parish school system, and we feel the same with Chalmette Refining. So, congratulations to each and every one of you. Good luck in the tournament. And also, a special thanks to all our coaches who spend much time preparing these students, and their teachers also. So, thank you and congratulations. We look forward to seeing those big thinkers, which are the awards after Nationals. Thank you.
And now, I just, right before, you know, as I looked through SuperNews and then looked at the people here tonight and our partners in the community, I just need to make just a statement on how fortunate we are here in St. Bernard Parish to have such great community partners. You know, from the Academic Games perspective, we've had that relationship with Chalmette Refining for over 20 years. You know, so, I mean, that's really significant. It goes way back. We've built a very, very strong Academic Games program. And as everyone has said before, it is so important that we don't bog these kids down and say, "Okay, now you have to raise money for your trip," and those kinds of things, when their main part should be studying and performing and doing what they do best. With the Miro Foundation, we have been tremendous partners with the Miro Foundation. I know that right after Katrina is when, you know, reading you, we got to be such good friends and such great partners in every endeavor that we've had in the rebuilding of our school system. So, we could not do the kinds of things that we do without the support of the Miro Foundation. So I want to give them a round of applause again, too. And as, and as you saw in the SuperNews presentation, so many of our community organizations were mentioned with other programs that we have. And that just goes to show you the strength that we have in St. Bernard Parish to get everyone to pull together to support our kids, which is really the most important thing that we do, and in such a positive, positive way. So, thank you guys for being here tonight. And if anybody else is listening out here, all the organizations within our community who give us such strong support, not only monetarily, which is one thing that we definitely need, but in their time and their effort, what they actually put into working with our kids, which to me, in most cases, is a lot more important. I mean, the money's important, don't get me wrong. But really, that our kids see that there are adults, there are grownups, who are coming to their schools and helping them to achieve and to better their skills. And that's what a true community is all about. So, thank you guys for the support, and thank all of our community partners for what they do each and every day for our kids. I just wanted to, you know, we talk about the kids all the time, and I do want to congratulate our students and our coaches and our parents as well. But I just wanted to make sure that our community realizes what an important part our community partners play in the development of children within our school system.
And speaking of children, I'm going to now introduce the children. And we're going to introduce the players and the coaches, and as we call their names, they're going to come around and shake your hand. And we have some nice polo national team shirts that, once they make their way around, the coaches will hand them a shirt, and they wear those at the awards night, Monday night after the tournament. And we started this 20 years ago, and year by year, more and more schools have done it. Now, Agloa actually sells polo shirts, national shirts, after tradition we started for 20 years ago. So, without much further ado, we'll start with the elementary team, national coach, Mrs. Melinda Hall.
Okay. Oldie the goodies, huh? Mr. Wemberly, if you would want to come up and stand beside Mr. Campbell, I think you belong in this receiving line, if we call it.
Elementary team members, Jonah Capstick. And now, we have the middle division team, middle division national coach, Mrs. Lori Gilchrist.
Lori, thank you for everything you do.
And middle division national team members, Albin Chavez. And middle division national team members, Albin Chavez. And we have two high school teams, a junior team and a senior team. So, we have, we do have three adults going with the high school team. We have, and speaking of students who we all have seen since they were young, Mrs. Abby Schilling played Academic Games in elementary school, and she's now our high school coach. So, Mrs. Abby Schilling, national coach. And not only an elementary school Academic Games player, and then teacher, and now assistant principal at St. Bernard Middle School, Mr. Jonathan Palazzola. And we do have a handful of high school students who couldn't be with us tonight, but I wanted to acknowledge them as team members. Connor Dewey, Hannah Ramsey, Abraham Sharoff, Carter Tran, and Christian Thomas. And our final adult going to the tournament, as y'all know, Maggie Russell is now principal of Arlene Miro Elementary School, so she can't go as the national administrator. So, Ms. Alicia Capstick is going to step in for Ms. Russell. Ms. Capstick, as you know, was assistant principal at Tris. She now runs the planetarium, and she has been to Beta with Tris with 85 students. So, she's coming well-qualified. Okay, and that's it.
Well, again, we just want to congratulate all of the Academic Games team members, the families, all of the coaches, teachers, sponsors, and again, our corporate sponsor for this event, Chalmette Refining. Let's give them all a round of applause. Ms. Diezart?
Thank you, Ms. Lemoine. And also, just one real quick thing, it's so nice to see mother-son duos, Ms. Schilling and her son, and Ms. Higginbotham and her son. Congratulations. It's a wonderful, you know, your pride.
Ms. Capstick.
Oh, and Ms. Capstick and her son. Great duos. And good luck.
Great job. Any other board members? All right, thank you. And I want to give a shout-out to Ms. Lametta, who, thank you for your leadership and support for this program, putting together the tournaments throughout the year, setting those up, making sure that they're run effectively. I know that these Academic Games national teams come down to split points. It's a lot of pressure, and we want to thank you for your leadership and support, and the values that you instill in the team members. So, thank you, Ms. Lametta. Okay. Agenda item number 3.1 is the approval to incorporate the report of the General Committee meeting minutes of March 11th, 2025, into the minutes of the March 25th, 2025, regular monthly meeting. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Krezen, seconded by Mr. Long. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 9-0.
Okay. Agenda item number 3.2 is the approval of regular monthly meeting minutes of February 18th, 2025, as published on March 21st, 2025.
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Diezart, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Okay, agenda item number 4.1 are personnel changes for March 2025, and we have Ms. Natalie Alvarez joining us. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, board. In your folders, you will find personnel changes from the last school board meeting.
Okay, and I see we have several retirees, so I will toss it to Ms. Diezart.
Thank you, Ms. Lemoine. My goodness, we have a lot of additional retirements than we did at the committee meeting. And if I could just mention those retirees, they are Patricia Gould at Araby Pre-K teacher, Mr. Barry Lemoine, which we all know Mr. Lemoine, Ms. Lemoine's husband, and also just, he was a teacher at AJ for many years, and they moved up to the central office, and he was been with Jack in the back and the studio team, and it's just been a wonderful job. And Barry's just been a gem, and like a piece of gold to our school system, and we're surely going to miss Barry, and hopefully he will be available at each home. We need him on a volunteer basis, but...
Especially to write jokes.
To write jokes for the KND, yes. But anyway, we sure going to miss you, Barry, and thank you for your many years of service to our school system, to the kids, and to all of us. So, thanks, Barry. I know you were here earlier. He left, I think, just so he didn't have to hear this. But anyway, congratulations to him. And Melinda Hall, who was just here with the academic teams. I didn't realize Melinda had put in for her retirement, but Melinda's been absolutely wonderful. One of my sons had her as a teacher at Joe Davies years ago, when she was wonderful. And, you know, she's done so much for the students in the classroom, and then also through Academic Games. And we thank you, Melinda, for all you've done. Jody Crowe from Chalmette High, we want to thank you for your many years of service, and I wish you a very happy retirement. And we know you've touched the lives of many in the high school level. And then Patricia Gould, we congratulate you, and thank you for your many, many years of service to our students, and we want to wish you a happy retirement. And then, we also have Ms. Harriet Bruceard, who we mentioned at the committee meeting. Ms. Harriet always put a smile on children's faces. She was wonderful at Lacoste. We have Pamela Rhodes from Chalmette High, and we want to thank Pamela, too, for her years of service. And then also, we have Janet Fontenot from Davies. We thank you so much, Janice, for your many years of service. And Janelle Perez from Miro. Goodness, we are losing so many wonderful people to retirement. But we want to thank all of you for, again, for your commitment and your dedication to our school system, and we wish each and every one of you a very, very happy, healthy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diezart. You spoke check?
Yeah, just to echo Ms. Diezart's... Yeah, just to echo Ms. Daisart, we have a lot of people who are now notifying us, of course, that they're going to be retiring primarily at the end of the school year, and I think at this time of year that happens, we're going to have our community, school-to-community breakfast, I mean banquet, very, very soon, where we'll honor our retirees. So I do want to give a shout out to our retirees, Ms. Broussard, Ms. Rhodes. Ms. Fontenot and Ms. Perez, our support people who are retiring, have done an outstanding job in our school system, in the cafeteria, as a school secretary, as a paraeducator, so many and so many years of tremendously great service. Our teachers in the school, who was actually a paraeducator, became a preschool teacher. Jody Crowe, who came to us a little bit later in his career and is now retiring. And, you know, I've got to give a shout out, Melinda Hall has done an incredible job over the years, working with her academic games team, and I do remember her when she was, I think, a fourth grade teacher at Davies. I'm not sure what other grade level. She may have taught, tremendous teacher, and then became a teacher of our gifted students, and has done an incredible job with academic games. And I don't know what to say about Barry. I keep telling him, you really don't want to do this. At least, you know, wait a little while, but he's been a tremendous, tremendous asset to our school system for so many years, and has done some incredible things with our Penn TV station, the writing, the inspiration to our students, the support of our teachers, great support to me as well, and to the administrators in our school system, and I know our school board as well. And he's going to be a tremendous loss, but I told him, if he does, he's going to come volunteer, because he's got to continue to help us do some of these things, or I know where he lives, and I'm going to go tackle him and physically bring him back. But tremendous service to our school system, and all of these people are going to be sorely missed on an everyday basis, but as many of our retirees have done, I really do think they will come back and support our kids, because, as we say, teaching and working with our students, you know, are considered not a job, but a vocation. And these people have spent a tremendous amount of time in their lives in supporting all of our students, so I'm sure that they will be, you know, they are going to be around. But as you can see, as people retire, the need that we have for people to come in and begin their careers for us, you see paraeducators, cafeteria technicians, school secretaries, as well as teachers. So anyone out there who is looking for a tremendous career where they can make a difference with kids, in whatever role that they choose to do, we're open to you, we can help train you in those particular areas, because we're looking for good people who love children and want to work with kids each and every day. There's a place for you within our school system. So please, contact Ms. Alvarez, she can help you find a place for you within our schools. So if you're listening out there, we want you, if you are a dedicated individual and love children.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Any other board members? Mr. Long?
Well, we'll say, we will miss Barry. I mean, who's going to make us laugh? And who's going to, who's going to have the patience to try to make actors out of these 11 people? I mean, we had to do a lot of retakes.
Oh, there he comes now.
There he is.
You're watching now.
But good luck in whatever you do, Barry, and thank you for your service. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. And as Ms. Daisart and Ms. Voeche said, it's bittersweet at this time of year to see so many folks that are retiring, and, but it's something that they have all earned and achieved, but it is very difficult to see these folks leave. I had the pleasure of teaching alongside of Melinda Hall after Katrina, doing Gifted and Talented in Academic Games, and I got to see firsthand the passion that she has for what she does, and so that certainly is a tremendous loss. And to Barry, who just walked back in, thank you so much for all that you do for our students. You are an inspiration to so many, so many that are teaching now in the classroom and decided they wanted to be a teacher because of you. So thank you for making a difference for all these years, and we hope to have you as a volunteer. We know you won't be far away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number 5.1 is the approval of the Head Start continuation application for 2025-2026. There was a recommendation by the committee.
Also moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Daisart, seconded by Ms. White. Any questions or comments? And again, we want to thank Ms. Chantel Scallenger for her presentation at the last board meeting. If there are no questions or comments, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 9-0.
Thank you. Agenda item number 5.2 is the approval of the administration's request for permission to advertise to bid for the official journal for the St. Bernard Parish School Board Fiscal Year, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, and there was a recommendation by the committee. We have a motion by Ms. Lee Bowman, seconded by Mr. Long. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 9-0.
Okay, agenda item number 5.3 is the approval of the administration's request for permission to advertise to bid for painting and body repairs for the St. Bernard Parish School Board Fiscal Year, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. There was a recommendation by the committee. We have a motion by Ms. Lee Bowman, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 9-0.
Thank you. Agenda item number 5.4 is the approval of the administration's request for permission to advertise to bid for gasoline, diesel, lubricating oil, antifreeze, and transmission fluid for the St. Bernard Parish School Board Fiscal Year, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, and there was a recommendation by the committee. We have a motion by Ms. Lee Bowman, seconded by Ms. White. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 9-0.
Agenda item number 5.5 is the approval of the administration's request for permission to advertise to bid for paper, cleaning, and custodial supplies for the St. Bernard Parish School Board Fiscal Year, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, and there was a recommendation by the committee. We have a motion by Ms. Creason, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 9-0.
Agenda item number 5.6 is the approval of the administration's request for permission to advertise to bid for bus parts for the St. Bernard Parish School Board for the Fiscal Year, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, and there was a recommendation by the committee. We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Daisart, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 9-0.
Agenda item number 5.7 is the approval of the administration's request for permission to advertise a request for proposals for web-based reading language arts guided reading intervention software for K-12, and reading language arts skills development software for K-12 for one year, with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods, and there was a recommendation by the committee.
Also moved.
Motion by Ms. Daisart, seconded by Ms. Rodney. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 9-0.
Agenda item number 5.8 is the approval of the administration's recommendation of property insurance renewal by the MultiInsure Layered Coverage, Option A, at a cost of $3,123,183.78 for the St. Bernard Parish School Board for the period of April 1, 2025 through March 31, 2026. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman, and joining us tonight, we do have Mr. Tim Clements and Mr. Dave Clements with us. Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 9-0.
Okay, agenda item number 6.1 are items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. Of course, we have time to do that. And agenda item number 7.1, the superintendent's notes. Ms. Voeche.
Okay, in your pack, it is the general fund budget to actual report for February, which we do every month. That's just for your information. And I just wanted to reiterate, I know we saw that in SuperNews, but the Special Olympics last Friday was just a wonderful event, which showed how all of our community partners pull together and make it a great day for our students and their families. This weekend, Kiss Me Kate will be performed by the St. Bernard, by the Chalmette High School players. It will be this weekend, on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. You can get tickets through Eventbrite on the website, or call the school, and it's just an absolutely wonderful event. Every play that they put on is just outstanding and professional. So please, take the time, take a couple of hours out, and visit our students as they perform Kiss Me Kate. And then lastly, on April 2, at Chalmette High School in the morning, our chamber is again sponsoring the Women's Professional Network, where many of the women business people within our community and outside of our community meet with our female students who are interested in terms of speaking about opportunities available to them and business practices. So we'll be at Chalmette High School that morning on April 2, with the businesswomen in the community, speaking with our young students at Chalmette High School. It's usually 9 o'clock, 9 to...
11:30.
Yeah. Okay, and I think that's it, Ms. Lamoyne. Commitment, well, that's going to intern in the school system, right?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Voeche. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Rodney. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.